Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're gonna, you started a little bit earlier. Probably a couple of minutes here. Just because we've got to have you in here and want to get moving and get along and have healthy discussion about a lot of things. Can everybody hear me?
No.
Oh, okay. Because we're gonna have a lot of healthy discussion about a lot of issues related to the college and hopefully provide some vision, if we can, I don't know, some vision towards the future and then some discussion about where we are as a college, too. So, we're gonna get started. Good morning, Ms. Bello. We're gonna get started right away. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do the invocation after, and then afterwards we'll do the pledge, and then we have two public speakers. If you please stand. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to provide education in our community in a better way. Give us guidance and vision to do what's right in no matter what situation that we're in. Lord, thank you for the folks that serve this college on a daily basis, from the least to the most. Lord, thank you for this community. Thank you for giving us, as leaders, an opportunity to serve. Give us strength in all we do. Thank you for leaders like Nelson Mandela, who fought when no one else would and who believed when no one else would. And we just thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Give us traveling grace to and from this place in the name of Jesus in whom I pray and in the name of who you may pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two public speakers, first being Antoine Wells. Would you please come forward, Mr. Wells, to the microphone up here?
My name is Antoine Wells, a stakeholder in St. Pete Midtown at Esquire Barber Shop, 1125 22nd Street, which is right next door to the Midtown Youth Family and Richman Center, which is my primary concern. I'm a stakeholder in St. Pete Midtown, homeowner, barber, general contractor, mentor, tutor, mentor at Merrill's Elementary. My concern about the use of the gym is because, this is an article back in 2011, where I was actually mentoring students from the Jordan Park area, students from John Hopkins and Merrill's Elementary. During that time, I was finding great use of the gym. Here, more recently, in the St. Pete Bulletin, also in the barber shop, which is right next to the gym, I've been finding use for Bible study, different things of that nature for the students in the community. For the last year or so or better, the gym has been closed and we haven't been able to utilize that. It's my understanding that St. Pete College wants to purchase it, and I'm just concerned about the use of it. And we want to make sure that the gym is gonna still be available for activities like this that will enhance the youth of our community, which is my primary concern as a stakeholder in the community. Like I said, I'm a general contractor as well, and so I'm also concerned about the opportunities for the development of the new construction and make sure that the opportunities are widely known amongst all the general contractors that are local in our community. That's my concern. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Wells, thank you so much for coming. You're actually our first public speaker since I've been on the board, so. I appreciate it. Knowing you and your family for a very long time, one thing that I can assure you of, well, two things, is, one is that we are in the process of buying a gymnasium, and we will be having community input on what needs to go there. I would follow up with Dr. Law in his office, and I can assure you that he will give you as much information about where we are and what we plan on trying to accomplish there. And then, two, as far as the general contractor, follow up with Dr. Law. We're looking for good subs and subcontractors for that particular site and are working with the general contractor on that every day. So, we were more than happy to try to help you with that. But just follow up with Dr. Law, get his card and his information before you leave, and we will follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
All right. Ms. Farrell?
Good morning. My name is Beatrice Holyfield Farrell, and I am not, I'm speaking to you as a resident of Pinellas County. And one of the things I would encourage you to do when you, as a follow-up to what Mr. Wells said, when you look at the use of the gym, that I would hope that you would put out a request for a proposal. If the college is concerned, or if their purpose is to make sure that the gym is going to be made available to the public, that it would be in the benefit of the public and the best interest to solicit bids for the use of it, so that everybody who has an opportunity has the ability to weigh in on how the facility should be utilized. Thank you.
Ms. Farrell, likewise, if you will follow up Dr. Law, I'm sure he'll, you guys can talk.
We met.
All right. All right. Okay. All right, any more public speakers that have not given a card? First of all, let me say thank you to both of you for coming. The best way to say this is, I think Dr. Law's a little tired of me. We're finally about to see some action in Midtown, number one. Number two, I think he's tired of me saying, making sure that we're involving folks in Midtown and asking the questions every month. But I think a lot of the boy members are doing the same thing as well. It's a major concern. We made that commitment to Midtown, and we're gonna keep our commitment, not just because it's Midtown, but because it's needed. And if you look at the growth amongst these campuses, Midtown campus continues to grow every year. Am I right? Dr. Law and Dr. Gordon are growing every year. We're adding classes and, you know, what is gonna be a dream that comes true. We told Pastor Murphy and some other folks that we want to make sure that people can walk to school and get their, and finish their AA, and that will be a reality really, really soon. And thank you for your commitment, and we look forward to working with you, really. And if, you know, if you don't think we're working with you, just call me.
(Inaudible)
Nah, that call goes, hey, it always goes to him first. I will tell you, I've never had a problem with Dr. Law following up and giving me a report on, hey, here's where we are, I talked to Beatrice, we talked to Mr. Wells, here we are. And so, we look forward to working with you. We will do that. We will follow up. So, thank you. All right, moving along in the agenda, and you're welcome to stay. It's gonna be a heavy one if you want to, but I don't know if you want to do that. You wanna, we're moving down to new business, and that's the naming of the Midtown Center new building and the Midtown Center for Achievement. Dr. Law, Dr. Gordon?
(Inaudible)
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. We have for your recommendation, for your presentation for you this morning to consider are the recommendations for the naming of the two facilities for Midtown. The first is the existing building, and the second is the proposed building, which you see behind me. For the first building, we are proposing the name be Cecil B. Keane Senior Student Achievement Senior. As you all well know, Mr. Keane was a prominent member educator of St. Petersburg. He worked at St. Petersburg College. He served on the Board of Regents for the state of Florida and worked in a significant number of positions here at the college, as well as on the Board of Trustees. So, we feel it not robbery to name this facility after Mr. Keane. The second proposal for your consideration is the new facility, which will be going up hopefully really, really soon. They'll start breaking ground on that, and we're recommending that that building be named after Douglas L. Jamerson Jr. Mr. Jamerson is a native of St. Petersburg. He grew up in the Midtown area. He finished schools here in the Midtown area. He graduated from St. Petersburg when it was junior college. He also graduated from the St. Petersburg Police Academy. He started his career as a safety person over at St. Petersburg High School, went on to work in a number of different capacities in education, was elected to the House of Representatives in 1982 and served in that until 1993, until he was appointed as Commissioner of Education by late Governor Lochnell Childs. He served in that position until 1995. He was then appointed to the Department of Labor, where he served as Secretary there. During his tenure in the House of Representatives, he had key legislation that provided funding to start the police academy down at the Allstate Center. He also authored Blueprint 2000, which was landmark education reform here in the state of Florida. So, we feel that it's right for us to name this building after Douglas L. Jamerson, who also worked for the college as well. Board members, if there are any questions at this point, I'd be happy to entertain those.
What other members, what other groups in the community were consulted? I know we have a committee, and obviously that committee kinda has their fingers on the pulse of the community. But what other specific groups were consulted about the names? I support both of them. I just want to make sure that we kinda get it out there, that we reached out to the community.
Let me answer. When we adopted the rules, it was anticipated that more often than not, you are, people approach you with names to consider, okay, as opposed to some sort of general RFP process. So, in this case, as we were working through the many months, these names came to us, and the way our rules work is address the recommendations you have, okay? So, we really don't do a general solicitation for those names. If the committee had concerns that there are other more worthies, that would have come up in the committee process, is my suspicion.
And the question did come up in the committee proceedings, and we did address it, pointing out that one of the things that rule asks for is that there's either significant contributions for philanthropy or significant contributions specifically to St. Petersburg College, and these two gentlemen rise to that level. Other questions, members of the board?
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) on the committee. I'd like to make the motion to approve Mr. Keane and Mr. Jamerson.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Not opposing, then we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Dr. Law, I would add one thing that, Mr., two things. One is Mr. Keane was a great member of this board until he passed, and as well deserved, his name goes on the facility. And then, secondly, we gotta make sure Dennis Jones comes to Doug Jamerson, whatever we have for him. For many people that don't know, Doug was my uncle. And Doug had two partners in crime, Dennis Jones and Jim King. And he loved serving with those two people, but Dennis could probably give us stories. They served in legislature for about 20 years together, so make sure we get Senator Jones back here for this, whatever we do. All right. All right, so we're starting our strategic planning workshop. Dr. Law, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank very much. We, of course, are always, I look forward to this every year. This is, I think, among the very highest and best uses of the board's input and guidance. I sent all of you a memorandum late last week to sort of outline what we want to do. We've got, we're working on two or three areas. First of all, we need guidance to get us, to make sure everybody shares a common focus on what we will be doing going forward. Secondly, you know, things, we find ourselves with new board members after many years of stability in the board, and I'm really working hard at an opportunity for board members to work with each other today, to get to know the dynamics of one another. So, the collaborative lab with a little bit of changing people from one group to another, I think would be a great chance. And then, thirdly, a chance for you to work with some, not just direct reports to me, but really some people who are doing the work in the organization, so board members can get a sense of the talent level across and all that. So, we do that. I'm not gonna condition it, but we find ourselves, you know, I'm very pleased with the work we've been doing, but the need to maintain a very clear focus and a very clear commitment to executing what we're trying to do seems to me to be what we're doing. What you see in front of you, we're not marching off in 50 new directions. We are trying to strengthen things that have been historical strengths of our institution, but which need ever more diligence and allow us to then continue to serve the community in ways. Every question is worthwhile. I have conditioned the staff to speak less, let board members ask questions, express opinions, ask for more information. We're gonna try to find the right balance between telling you stuff, asking you stuff, and responding to your questions. Mr. Chairman, you know that once I turn it over to Andrea, we're done. I'm out of control at that point, so happily to do that. But I think we're gonna have a good morning if everybody will just stay with us.
Good morning, Board of Trustee members. It's great to have you in the collaborative labs. Welcome, and thank you for your leadership of our great institution. And good morning, SPC staff. Good morning to our visitors and our guests. This is the place to be this morning, it looks like, and that is because we're gonna do very important work in visioning. You know, we have served thousands of organizations over the past 10 years. The collaborative lab was strategic planning, building blueprints for the future, and it's such an honor to serve our own institution and our own board. So, we have an aggressive agenda, and that is part of the collaborative labs culture. We accomplish accelerated results in just a few short hours. And here are our objectives for the morning. We always build upon strengths, so we use a process called appreciative inquiry. And I'm not sure if you've ever heard of appreciative inquiry. It's the backdrop of every collaborative lab that we facilitate. It is building on strengths. It is asking strength-based questions rather than deficit-based questions, because you know you get a totally different outcome when you ask what is right with our institution versus what's wrong with our institution. Not that we shy away from looking at gaps or deficits, but it's just not the focus of our process. So, the first thing we're going to do is to celebrate key successes over this past year. And in a moment, I'm gonna ask any of our team members who have been filling our success whiteboards to share a few key successes that we can leverage going forward, and I'll also ask our Board of Trustee members if you have some key successes you'd like to share. So, that is objective one. A part of the appreciative inquiry process is then to beam you into the ideal future. So, we will begin with the end in mind, and we'll look at the end of 2015, and we'll say, what have we accomplished? What are our ideal goals for that? And I want to ask you all to turn your attention to the vision mural, which is before us. We have on the collaborative labs staff a wonderful artist. His name is Jonathan Massey. He's standing behind that pole right there. He will emerge as the session continues. And what we have in front of us is the SPC vision, mission, and values that were recently adopted, that were adopted this past year. So, when we say begin with the end in mind, this is our vision as an institution. This is our mission. These are our values. And a picture does say a thousand words. So, as you continue to move through the morning, we would ask you to keep that front and center. That is our beacon. That is the future, where we want to go. So, with that in mind, what we will ask you as leaders to do is to build the strategic direction. And so, there are four key strategic priority areas we're gonna be focusing on. The first is the strategic enrollment growth. The second is retention. The third is online learning, and the fourth is workforce. So, we will spend a good deal of time, maybe an hour and a half, looking at future direction in those four areas. Then we will have a laser, kind of a rapid opportunity for you to weigh in and give us direction and expectations on organizational health issues. And there are numerous organizational health issues we will go through: developmental education, financial aid, faculty evaluations, organizational initiatives, and financial modeling, all by 11:30. So, you can see what we mean when we say accelerated. So, those are our three objectives. Do you accept the mission for the morning? Okay. Let us now turn to our successes. And what I'd like to do is ask any of our SPC staff members to please share key successes in 2013 in the college experience area. So, we'll take maybe two or three or four of you, just stand up, and PJ and Milo have a microphone. We'll be sure to come to you. So, just anyone who has a success in the college experience area, raise your hand, stand up. Great.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. As a college experience, I'm very proud of the entire initiatives and projects we've got, but I put my heart and soul into the, my learning plan, and as you know, that is the roadmap to graduation for our students. And I just want to share phenomenal growth that we've had since we initiated that back in the fall of 2012, college-wide. We've seen consistent growth in our SLS 1101 classes, starting at 1,000 in 2012, and now over 2,500 in the SLS classes. And also, total student body-wide, we started at 8,200, and now we're up to over 11,000 students that have learning plans in place. And I want to give tribute to my colleagues, the provost, but also Dr. Smalley, our frontline advising staff, and as well as the faculty and students in the SLS 1101 class. We're very, very proud of those results. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Carney. And as you're sharing your successes, please state your name as well for the record and also for our Board of Trustee members. Who's next? College experience successes.
Good morning, Phil Nicotera. I just wondered, this is our second year of implementation of early alert, and I think what we can see is that consistently we're receiving over 2,000 alerts from our developmental and gateway classes. And if we look at all of the college experience things that we're doing, I think we've seen, we've been able to measure that we've been able to keep more students in classes because of all of those things. Secondly, we've instituted a program that's called the Student Coaching System to really help our advisors better-case manage our students as they come in. And so, this October, we instituted using an action plan for students within that student coaching system. So, I want to congratulate everybody for all their hard work on that.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Nicotera. Any others, maybe one more in the college experience area? Please, Dr. Duncan?
Good morning, Doug Duncan. I want to take a little different approach on something you'll see interspersed in these, a lot of reference to technology. And the folks in our technology area just did a phenomenal job this year of contributing to the student coaching system, the, all the programming that goes into it. One thing that tends to really go under the radar, though, and I think it really impacted the college experience for students, is that this year, we replaced over 4,000, well, we added 4,000 new wireless terminals at all of our sites and probably quadrupled the student access to this information and all these nice things that are done via technology. So, I want to particularly pay tribute to the technology folks in this, they did a great job.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Duncan. All right, let's move to support services for students. What key successes can we celebrate in 2013? Just raise your hand high. This was a popular board, so we should have many examples. You guys are gonna get shy on me now? Please, Dr. Williams?
I'm sorry. Let's make sure you have the mic.
You got the mic?
Francis New. This falls both in college experience and support services for students, but $1.2 million awarded in scholarships again this year.
Great. Thank you, Francis. Dr. Williams?
As you can see, all of the things on the board, from business intelligence to the student complaint SharePoint site, et cetera, happened by teamwork. And a lot of people in this room, the frontline staff, and everyone was involved here. The SPC mobile, back to you, Doug. I also think the Ask Maria helped open our eyes to questions that students may have to find out what are the gaps of communication that we have, and we're staying on top of the, being popular for military students, for the vets. And that's very important.
Thanks, Dr. Williams. Any others in the student support services area? No? One in the back, Linda? Dr. Hogan's?
I just wanted to make mention of the students' use of the learning centers on our campuses. That was a high number for us initially, beginning that process. So, there was a great increase in the numbers of our students who are actually using the Learning Support Commons. And we found that students using the Commons, excuse me, four or more times were more successful in their classes and completing those courses. So, that was a significant accomplishment.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Hogan's. Okay, one more. Milo?
Hi, my name's Mark Matthews. I want to sort of add to what everybody has said up to this point and give a little bit of a shout-out to my provost, Dr. Karen Kaufman-White. She invited us, academic chairs, to attend the early Wednesday meetings where all this data was being dispersed. And when I was first invited, I went, oh. But I gotta tell you, what it did for me is it allowed me to look inside my own department to try and find ways, to find an early alert system of sorts to help my, in the music department, we have a different kind of student, and sometimes it's hard to get them focused on academics. And so, that information was completely invaluable, and I want to thank everyone that started this to, it's, keep going, keep going. Get your chairs to come, because it helped me a lot. It gave me a really great picture about how this can work, to watch the success ramp up. And I thank Dr. Law for allowing me to attend it.
Thank you, Mark. All right, let's move on to instructional and program improvements. That was a third strategic priority for 2013. Who has a success? Raise your hand high. Sharon?
Hi, Sharon Sederlin. I have two for the College of Computer and Information Technology. We have entered into two programs that are statewide with all of the other colleges. One is the Smart Choice 10K program that we have the curriculum all built for, and the other one is an articulation agreement with the University of West Florida for the complete Florida program.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Sederlin. We have one in the back.
Jim Wechter from Facilities. Couple of our physical facility improvements, the new Clearwater Campus Ethics and Social Science Building, the Collaborative Center for Engineering Technology that Brad Jenkins runs at the Clearwater Campus, the Seminole Library Expansion for the Public Policy Institute, and then the TL Building at the Seminole Campus that is, was redesigned for science classrooms, science lab, as well as some improved student engagement areas.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Dean Chapin?
This is a little less concrete, Jim, no pun intended, but, and won't seem as earth-shaking to those of you that haven't been at the college for a while, but we have been able to get a consistent curriculum across the institution in a number of our key courses, particularly in Human Anatomy and Physiology, which is a gateway course for students going into allied health. Previous to this, if a student took a class, first semester anatomy on one campus and a second semester anatomy on another campus, they could be faced with almost an entirely different curriculum, new textbooks to the tune of about $500 or $600 a semester. That's all gone away. We have consistent curriculum in both labs and lectures, and that process will continue until we get that appropriately implemented across the institution.
Great. Thanks, Dean Chapin. Couple more, please.
Our Advanced Manufacturing Training Center in Midtown in partnership with Lumen Stream. Folks in the community are looking at that as a model for how education and business can work together. The students that are involved in that have passed all of its certifications up to this point and are excited about the third phase of that.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Gordon.
Rebecca Ludwig, Dean of the College of Health Sciences.
Rebecca Ludwig, Dean of the College of Health Sciences. At the Health Education Center, we have two new AS programs, one in Orthotics and Prosthetics, the other in Health Sciences, which could become one of the largest programs in the college. We also have a fabulous, new, beautiful, completely renovated dental hygiene clinic. And I want to thank Dr. Nicotera for his support and enabling that process to move forward. And I would invite all of you that come and visit. We would love to show it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Ludwig. One more.
The college has had a very robust response to developmental education reform over the last six months. I want to particularly express my appreciation to the cross-functional team that works so closely together to promote student success even as we are making great changes in our developmental course options.
Thanks, Dr. Campbell. See, you're getting warmed up now. It's hard to even move on, so let's, let's do that anyway. Employee development and support successes. Who has one? Raise your hand high.
Good morning. I'm Patty Jones from Human Resources. And about 18 months ago, when we were starting really in-depth the college experience initiatives, at the same time, we committed to significant training to support that, to make sure that it truly was effective. And since then, in about 18 months, we have gone through about 20,000 documented training hours for our faculty and staff.
Wow. Thank you, Patty. Nice round number. Any others? Please.
Hi, Rich Merkandonte, Faculty Senate President. We've had a great year with FGO creativity grants. We awarded 10 faculty members creativity grants. And after several years of working towards sabbaticals, we have our first five faculty members going on very exciting sabbaticals next semester. So we're very proud of those achievements.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Merkandonte. Dr. White in the back?
Karen Kaufman-White, St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus. I want to talk just for a second about how the employee development and support really goes across all of these other areas as well, and how that plays out on campus in terms of the empowerment initiative and the building of confidence in our staff and the feeling of all working together when we have that cross-department, cross-campus involvement with one another that is still kind of new to us in a lot of ways. It's very much appreciated, and you can feel that when you're on campus.
Great. Thanks, Dr. White. Let's move on to the other category. Do we have maybe one success in the other category? Didn't fit any of these categories?
I'm not certain. I need a microphone. I'm Susan DeMers. And I just want to point out, yes, that's right, hands over your ears, Dr. Law, I want to point out that in the first, the second weekend in November, the St. Petersburg College Ethics Bowl team took home number one in the most competitive, largest regional ethics bowl competition in the country. And let me tell you, if the United States Naval Academy had taken home the competition, they did not. Had University of Alabama, Tuscaloosa, or at Birmingham taken it home, they did not. They all would have bragged about it. So I'm bragging this morning.
Thank you. Dr. Cooper?
It's with great pleasure that I announce our success in regards to our fifth-year interim report from SACS. We just got word this morning that no further actions are necessary. Thank you all.
All right. Congratulations. Outstanding. Okay, strong finish. One more, one more? Can you top that one, Frances?
I know, nothing can top Ann Cooper, Dr. Cooper, believe me. I wouldn't even try. But I did want to mention, because it was just announced, that our Lippa Ratner Museum received accreditation from the AAM.
Outstanding. Excellent. Very good. So what we do in the collaborative labs is we pause, celebrate successes, which we don't do very often in life, do we? And then we infuse those as we go into the ideal future. So we will transcribe all of the successes that didn't get mentioned, but they will be in the real-time record for you to review. And now we are ready to launch into our workshop process. We will be, from this time forward, dividing into two teams. And each team will have three Board of Trustee members and also SPC staff members. So you'll get to know each other, great collaborative discussion. There will be five rounds, so five different team configurations. And by the end of this morning, you all will have had an opportunity to work with each other, your colleagues on the Board of Trustees, as well as up to 25 SPC staff members. So that's the way our team process works. We have a keyboarder who will be appointed for each team because we use collaborative software. It's brainstorming software to help accelerate your ideas. We would ask a board member, a trustee member, to please appoint yourself as a spokesperson because at the end of each round, we will have a deliverable, top expectations, top observations. And we would ask a board member to please share the fruit of the, of the labor in your team areas, so your work product. Music means movement, so whenever you hear music, that's your cue to move to a new team configuration. And those team configurations are already defined in your agendas. So you'll see five different team configurations, and you'll know which of the two teams you'll be on at all times. All teams are A-teams, so that's a good thing. Our strategic direction is the first focus, and we have four strategic key drivers. We mentioned strategic enrollment growth, retention, online learning, and workforce. That will be the focus of the next hour and a half together. And here is the process. There will be three rounds, 30 minutes each. And in each round, so for round one, we've got strategic enrollment. Round two is a twofer. You have retention plus online learning. And then round three will be focused on workforce, each 30 minutes. What happens in each round is we will kick it off with a Just the Facts presentation, and that will be delivered by an SPC team member. They will allude to what you have in your packets. It's called Just the Facts. It's a document that you may want to have close at hand. And you can refer to that throughout the morning, key bullet points that will help drive your discussions and help those to be productive. And we would encourage you to place this under your pillow at night as well, after the engagement, so that you can continue to have those permeate through your thinking. Collaborative team discussions after each presentation will divide into teams, and we'll have you discuss for 15 minutes. And the work product at the end of each team discussion will be to identify your top questions and observations, as well as your top expectations. You will be using Think Tank software. And just to give you an idea of what, what is in store, this is very accelerated software. So the first round will be in strategic enrollment growth. You'll first look at top questions and observations based upon the Just the Facts presentation. You will identify one question or one observation at a time, and your keyboarder will enter that into the software. And before you know it, you will see numerous questions and observations appear. Both teams will be able to see the work of each other, so it's dynamic software. At a certain point, after about five minutes, we'll have you review all of the questions and observations, and we'll have you pick two, the two that you think are most important for our staff moving forward. And then you just simply drag those and drop those at the top of the list, so two per team. And that is our process. Then you go on to top expectations. So what we'd like to do now is invite Dr. Jesse Coraggio to come up, and he is your first Just the Facts presentation, and we're looking at strategic enrollment growth.
How's everyone doing? So if I'm a little bit more energetic than normal, it's because the news about SACS was literally just off the press. The president just got the call this morning, so I'm very excited about our results. I know the teams have worked very, very hard to have that outcome. I want to talk a little bit this morning about strategic enrollment growth, so I want to give you a little picture of what makes up enrollment, what it looks like, what's impacted, and what's changed over the last few years. We're going to start with kind of a trend analysis. And this data kind of looks back, going back to 2006, 2007, and where we are right now for fall '13, '14. And what you notice quickly here, and it's broken out by fall, spring, and summers up top at the green, is we were having pretty good strategic enrollment growth that we've had over a period of time. And it started to peter out a little bit in the '10, '11 timeframe, and then has come down a little bit from that period. Now, what you might notice right away is that's very close to some of the changes that we've had in our economy, and that has an impact. And what we can see here, this is actually at the state level. What you see in red is the unduplicated headcount for the entire state of Florida, for the college, all 28 community colleges. And what you see in blue is the employment rate. So what we notice is there's actually an inverse trend relationship that exists between the two. When the economy gets better, fewer people, you know, are having success in their jobs, they're not looking for other employment opportunities and things. And when the economy goes in a negative direction, then we find they tend to come back to the colleges, either to upgrade the skills they have for their current employment or to potentially find avenues for new employment through education. One of the, the big pools that we have, what really drives our enrollment on a day-to-day basis for the most part, is our local Pinellas County High Schools. It's actually those high school graduates that come to us. Some may come initially right out of high school, others may do something for a couple of years and then, and come to us after that. But that's the key for, for our enrollment over time. Now, this kind of shows you a perspective over the last couple of years, that we've been pretty consistent in about the, just under the 40% range. We get about 40% of graduates. About 30% come in initially, would come to us in the fall, and then we get a few, a few more percentages in the spring, and a few more percentages in the following summer. And you can see, we're pretty much on that same kind of path when you look at what we've received so far this fall period. Now, a couple of key points here are, with our enrollment from our Pinellas County Schools, you have to realize, we have the most densely populated county in all of Florida. When you look at the projections from the state, what you find out is we're near the bottom. I think we're second up. I think the Keys is the only community college that's actually below us in terms of contracted enrollment based on our population. These are our three biggest growth areas, and we're going to look at a time period from 2008, 2009 up to current. And you can see, these are the three big areas. One is online and course enrollment. That's gone up 32% over that five-year period. But I want to caution that a little bit. You have to realize, in some cases, that's the same student population. Those aren't necessarily all new students have come to us for online courses. That's in a lot of cases, us giving more options to students, and they're moving from face-to-face classes to other options blended or online. But it is a big portion of our enrollment, and we've had conversations about the online revitalization project. Over half of our students this fall are taking at least one online class. Almost 30% are taking exclusively online. When you look over the course of an entire year, those numbers actually go up even higher. They're more in the 40%, 60% range. So online education is a big component we have, and you'll see all the work we've done in the online revitalization is for that single purpose. Baccalaureate programs, they've grown 52% over that five-year period. You know, we've all known there's been a lot of baccalaureate growth. Over the last couple of years, we haven't developed a lot of new baccalaureate programs. We're going to start to rev that back up, and we've been working on that over the last year. We're proud to announce in January, we're going to bring to the Board a proposal for a new baccalaureate program. It's arts and entertainment technology, and it builds on the success that we've had with our MIR, our Music and Industry Recording Arts Program. So we're excited we're going to bring that to you in January for approval to move on. Those baccalaureate programs, as you know, have to get approved by the State Board of Education, so we'll bring the proposal originally to you. I say I have 30 seconds. Minority enrollment is other, another key enrollment driver. That's gone up considerably. You'll see the most out of any of the three, it's gone up 64%. Our Hispanic enrollment continues to climb. That's gone up every single year. The African-American enrollment has gone up, up till this past year, and it started to teeter off a little bit, but we still see it as a huge growth, potential growth area that we have for improvement. So we're going to work on those. What makes up enrollment? Well, real quickly, what makes up enrollment is two things. We have new students that come in, and we have students that are existing students we want to retain. Those are the two key factors when we talk about enrollment. So this is kind of the breakout. Our new students represent 24% of our makeup. Out of those, we have first-time in college students and new transfers. Our continuing students, our opportunities for retention through the college experience represent about 2/3 of our enrollment. And those readmit students, the ones that have been gone about a year coming back, represent about 10%. Oops. And then there's our goal to finalize. We like to do 3% growth each one of the next three years. That brings us just under 10% over a three-year period. So those are Just the Facts.
Thank you, Dr. Coraggio. So please keep the Just the Facts handy on strategic enrollment growth. And then also, the next document, if you could turn to your agendas and see your first team assignment for strategic enrollment growth, you're either in Team One or Two, and we'll be going to the Forest Lab. So what I would ask is that if, if you're not on one of the two teams, if we could have a parting of the Red Sea, so to speak, and have our Board of Trustee members head out that back door, hang a left, and you'll find Team One or Two, as well as our SPC team members, and then we'll all come in after everyone has your, your spots and your locations in the Forest Lab. We will meet you next door. So Team One, have you picked your top two questions or observations? Okay. And then if we can have a run-on sentence, that works? All right. So let's come to Team One, and I'll ask for a trustee member to please share your run-on sentence.
One and two.
They're ready. All right.
Now, now, I'm, I'm going to take about 45 seconds, so you all think. You all think. Even though I came in a little bit late, we have, we are two most important, or two things that we focused on were our budget for advertising, and then that kind of flows into who are we advertising to. We have an opportunity to talk to students in high school, but I think it's equally as important that we sell our, and I realize that I'm not supposed to use words like sell here, but to sell ourselves to the parents. Because at the end of the day, it's the parents that are, a lot of times, making these financial decisions and molding children's choices or, or giving them options. So those were our two, is to really look at our budget for advertising, look at who we're advertising to. Are we selling our successes well enough to the general public? And basically, making sure we're engaging families, parents, things like that in, in what we're doing and selling our successes.
Thank you, Team Two. Team One? Chairman?
I love following Vanna White. The two that we, we did have the budget for advertising, just so you know, so we did agree with you guys on that. But our top two were online education opportunities, be a budget for that, and, and kind of marketing outside of our traditional borders where we have for online education. An emphasis on workforce education through corporate partnerships. We talked about the growth, Dr. Coraggio talks about growth of, up to 10% over the next three years. Well, we want to step outside of the traditional things that we do in terms of just being educating, of just educating folks and looking to the workforce and saying, what do you really need? Being the first option on their mind in terms of moving up in the workforce and getting prepared to move up. And so those are the things, our top two.
Thanks, Chairman. So now your next mission is to go to top expectations bucket. And maybe in two minutes or three minutes, if you could formulate one or two top expectations, each team, board expectations. Ready? We're going to actually give Team, Team One the floor first. If you'd like to move your top expectations to the top, that would be fine, otherwise we'll, we'll come to Team One. And trustee Oliver, are you, are you up on this one?
I, you know, I guess I'm going, I'm as up as anybody else, probably.
All right. If, when we're ready, they're still deliberating. Yeah, if you have a top two, that would be great.
I think our, our first one kind of goes along with, with kind of the observations is, is how we plan our budgets and a lot of our money for marketing and PR. And, and to maybe focus on that a little bit more, and, and talk a little bit about our successes that we have in placing people or people moving up in their companies that are SPC grads, things like that. The second one was, kind of goes hand-in-hand with that, but it, it's more of focusing on and understanding the needs of the local corporations and businesses as to what their of that, of saying, "Somebody needs three Englishes and two maths," and, you know, but does that really meet the need of the community? And I'm having some real-time experience with this right now with, you know, with my son, but I think there's a need out there with people who get into businesses at entry-level positions, but know that they're not going any further without a bachelor's degree. It's just not going to happen. How do we meet that need? And how do we let people know that that is here for them?
Thank you, Team 1. Team 2, who can share the top expectations? Vice Chairman?
We came up with several, but I guess the two that came up to the top is, well, is the market for online education, and is there international market for that? We got into the finances of growing the online and the nuances between the various states. Some states, by my understanding, some states, they would be not productive to offer it. But the second one is to really dig deep, is where's that, you know, we have a goal of 3% the next several years. Where's the enrollment growth coming from? Is it coming from online? And really take some time and break it all down with retention, online, community, and I think this is probably takes, this is a whole workshop in itself, to have a strategy and where we're going to actually come up with this 3% expectation that we all have.
Okay, well, it looks like we've completed the first round. And it also looks like the focus has been around enrollment, as much on the word "strategic" as it has been on the word "growth." So, we had a local aspect and a global aspect of the expectation, and then questions such as, not only where is the 3% enrollment growth coming from, but also on this list, where is it going? Is that growth effective? And are the students remaining enrolled and graduating? So, we've highlighted the top expectations, but we've captured it all.
Great. Thank you, Milo. We are ready for round two, and so please look at your team configurations, and you're either in Teams 1 or 2. This is on retention and online learning. So, we'll play some music, have you quickly move to your new team assignment. All right. When you're ready, our first "Just the Facts" presentation on retention is Dr. Linda Hogan's. We'll invite her to come and share some key "Just the Facts" on retention. Dr. Hogan's.
Good morning. I'd first like to start by saying that retention is an outcome. It's a product of strategies put in place and practices that engage students, faculty, and staff in such a way that students are successful, and they complete what they start. To that end, I'd like to share with you some of our current retention efforts. Five of them. One is the college experience, and you are pretty much aware of the five critical initiatives or commitments that the college has made in the college experience. But in addition to that, staff development and intervention strategy surrounding academic standing has been included as a part of a webinar that happens every Wednesday morning when we're taking a look at the critical issues facing our students. In addition to that, we're looking at the academic advising model as well as online revitalization. Third, we're looking at enhancing processes and services that work with our male students, our veterans, and other special populations that we're working with. Fourth, we are embedding success strategies in the instructional pedagogy. And lastly, but not least, we are working on developing a retention plan. As you see on the board, our five-year retention goals, we're taking a look at that. When we see achievements, we're talking about successes. Successes are measured if students receive an A, B, or C in their courses, particularly looking at gateway courses, those courses that are college-level, college-level algebra, composition. When we talk about persistence, we're looking at students who are staying in college, staying in school from fall to fall. When we talk about retention, we're looking at those students who remain with us from fall to spring. But you see our graduation rates. The intent is, on the red bars, to raise those numbers within the next five years. Okay? So, that is our, working with our retention for St. Petersburg College. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hogan's. I'd now like to invite Dr. Cooper and Dr. Merkandante to address online learning.
Great, thank you. Over the last several months, we've collaborated faculty administration on a number of activities regarding to online learning. We want to revitalize our courses. We hired a consultant, and then we formed a steering committee, and after that, we created six specific topic committees, all of which had a mixture of faculty administration. We had at least nine academic disciplines represented on each and every committee with faculty from at least seven different campuses and centers across SPC. And our committees focused on big goals. Okay, we had online course development and review, faculty roles and support, student readiness to learn online, academic and student support services, and organizational structure. So, based on the research and discussion at these six committee meetings, a set of recommendations has been compiled to guide SPC in revitalizing its online education program, and we welcome any questions and concerns you might have.
Obviously, if we're going to stay competitive with other entities that have entered into this field of online education, there are a number of areas in which we need to be concerned about. We had over 130 recommendations come in from the committee members. We need to look at things like, as you've already heard, student readiness. Do we offer them an assessment before they get into online classes to ensure that they have the skills in regards to faculty development? We have previously certified faculty at the beginning of their online teaching experience, but we haven't done that ongoing. We need to make sure that they are keeping up with best practices and new technologies, so that needs to be an ongoing process. We need to look at courses. Do students, and when they enter an online course, find the same navigation? Do we need to standardize that? These are all the kinds of questions that we need to be looking at if we're going to stay ahead of the field. Then, most importantly, where do we place this in the organizational structure so that it has an ongoing strategic place? We need to look at how we are marketing, and what kind of a growth plan are we going to have over the next three to five years so that we are truly increasing our enrollment and not just shifting students from one modality to another? And where is the accountability, and how are we going to measure the success? As you can see, this requires a complete culture change, so there are many things that are going to be addressed as we move forward. We will continue to update you, and we want to hear your feedback and your ideas today. Thank you.
Well, thank you to our "Just the Facts" presenters, and we are now ready for our second round, which is a two-for-one round. So, that means, PJ, if you can bring up our Think Tank software, which is on retention first and then online learning, and I would invite you to really go toward those top expectations. You know, if you have some key questions, capture those, but what we want to net out for each is retention top expectations and online learning top expectations. So, you have 15 minutes for collaborative discussions. And who on Team 2 will be able to share your top expectation?
Our topic, or our expectation for retention was, basically, retention equals support, and that support needs to be both financial and scholastic. If you've got kids that have money when they start on the first day, and they can buy books, and they can get their ducks in a row, they at least start on an even playing field. Equally as important is scholastic help, which is like with our plan, our, you know, with our alerts and things like that, but to really focus on all that. It's one of those, we've started it, and we just need to keep going forward with it.
Thanks, Team 2. Team 1, can you please share your top expectation of retention?
I will try. Ours is kind of in line with that, but, you know, thinking about, when you talk about retention and kind of going back to my business, there's a couple of things. You know, number one is the job that you do while somebody's there, but then also, how engaged you are with them during that, making them want to come back and get more. And so, there's two pieces of that. So, ours is kind of, we need to analyze the quality of that engagement over the entire, you know, we look at it fall to fall or over a yearly basis. What about semester to semester or in smaller increments? Because that's where we tend to find, in our business, we tend to lose people, is over that smaller period of time, kind of thinking, "Well, we got your business, we don't really need to follow up on this anymore, we're good." And that's when you get in trouble, so.
Okay, well, we've completed the first half of this two-for-one round, and just a couple of takeaways on these top expectations. We're seeing that retention is seen as being multi-dimensional. There's more than one dimension to it, the financial and the scholastic dimension, and we're also seeing that retention is not a one-time thing. It's continuous, it's longitudinal over time.
Great. So, we are ready for online learning. Key questions, observations? Thank you. All right. I will ask Team 1, who would like to share your number-one expectation? Vice Chairman?
We talked a lot about standards across delivery and the professional engagement of online classes. There was a lot of discussion on, for online students, the only contact that they have with the college is actually, you know, through their computer. So, if they have a less-than-quality experience, that can affect retention, that can affect a lot of things, where a student that goes to a class, whether it's a less-desirable result, they get to meet other people on campus and other students, and they can, even if they struggle in the class, they can have a positive college experience. Online, that's their only experience, so to value that and understand that and put the policies and procedures in place that, you know, it's consistent in giving the faculty the freedom to deliver their material, but to have certain expectations of what an experience online should be, look like, should be critical.
Team 2, who can? Chairman?
Oh, yeah. Our top one is, is there a way to restrict students from enrolling in online courses if the previous attempt was unsuccessful? So, we want to have kind of some guidelines to make sure that these students are successful, and so they need to show they actually can complete an online course successfully before moving to another one. And we also discussed what the faculty and other folks had already been talking about in terms of making sure that faculty is trained to teach online courses and so on, so that's where we are.
Okay, and as we've now completed part two of this two-for-one round, we've heard two top expectations. If we look not only at those, but the underlying discussion, it seems like there's an inherent expectation in all this, that every time an online course is about to begin, is everybody involved, ready and prepared to succeed? Has the student's readiness been assessed? Is the faculty member fully prepared, and are there standards to evaluate success? And then, if students have not been successful, is there a way to maybe, expectation number two here, to discourage them from enrolling in the online course? So, an overall expectation of readiness for success on all sides.
Great, thanks, Milo. We are ready for round three, workforce teams, so please go to your new assigned teams, and we'll begin workforce.
Looks like everyone has found their new team assignment. the Facts" presentation by Dr. Jason Krupp. No pressure.
No pressure, all right. Riveting, "Just the Facts," ma'am, you're right. Here we go. All right, well, good morning, everyone. It's, I'm glad to hear they've already had some discussions about workforce, and I'm going to just build on that and provide an overview, five minutes or less here. So, I'm going to start with some things that we're currently doing and then transition into growing areas for growth. So, employability skills. Technical skills are important to prepare students for the workforce, and they can perform the tasks needed in the workplace. Equally important are the soft skill development, so the job readiness, the attitudes, the communication skills. We have addressed those needs with curriculum changes, with current courses, new courses being developed. The Capstone course is a good example of that. It brings in either simulated exercises, global competitions, or real-world projects with real employers in the classroom. Internships. What better way than to test your ability to perform in the workplace than an internship? As you can see, we've had some growth in internships on the credit side, and the good news is that 45% of the interns who responded to surveys said that they were offered full-time employment as a result of their internships. So, we're going to continue to grow internships. Job fairs, we had two job fairs this current, in the fall semester. We had 62 employers participate at Clearwater and Seminole, and over 300 students participated in the job fairs. In addition, WorkNet Pinellas has job fairs on our sites at EpiCenter, and we promote students to get involved with Employee Florida Marketplace and to hone their resumes and job skills and use all the services of WorkNet Pinellas. And finally, the Ready-to-Work Assessment. This is a program or an assessment created by the state that measures students' abilities to, they take the academics, the math, they do applied math, like workplace math, how do you read a budget, how do you do a chart? And they look at the work readiness, the job skills, how to find information when you're reading materials. So, we're using the Ready-to-Work Assessment increasingly, and in fact, we're using it as a replacement test, if you will, for the Advanced Manufacturing Training Program and under the Florida Trade Grant. They must score at a silver level to start that program. So, in workforce programs, there's a growing emphasis on career and technical education and industry certifications. I heard, we talked about parents this morning, and parents, I'm a parent, and it's taken me, working at the college, and becoming familiar with, what are, there's more than just bachelor's degrees out there for my child. There are career and technical education programs, there are two-year associate and science degrees. We tend to think of associates and lump them into one, general education preparing on for bachelor's degrees, but there are also associate and science degrees that prepare our students for entry directly into the workforce after two years. And there are certificate programs, there's applied technology diplomas, applied technology certificates. Just over a third of our students are enrolled in these programs. These results, 91% of the students enrolled in the workforce programs in 2012 were either working in field or in the military or continuing education. And the salaries for these graduates are comparable to those of baccalaureate, just under $2,000 that they're earning compared to a baccalaureate graduate. In addition to the credit, the degree programs, we also have 13,600 students enrolled in continuing workforce education programs and vocational training programs. So, the larger, the smaller number are like the police and fire academies, the larger number are programs like we have in the corporate training to learn to earn a 24 deployed military, under the Florida Trade Grant, the Advanced Manufacturing Training Programs. And I'll go into a little bit here in the next slide. This is a subset of the continuing workforce education programs that we offer, and so these all lead to industry certifications. As I mentioned on the last slide, industry certification is a growing area, and it's an area where we want to grow the college enrollments. Manufacturing is the smallest number at this point, but we're going to see exponential growth in that as we have launched two grants, Florida Trade- growth in that as we have launched two grants, the Florida Trade Grant and another grant in medical device manufacturing. We have students down at Loomisstream, they're, as we mentioned earlier today, getting industry certifications. Technology, I've got my 30-second warning here, so I'm going to fast forward. Technology, we've got another grant that's, you know, we're importing students from, importing people from other countries to work in, in our companies here. And we have a grant that's implemented, we're going second year, to train people for entry-level skills into IT. So we have students, 72 students lined up to take certification exams, and we create career pathways for those students. At the bottom, you see the certificate results in free college credits towards an associate's degree, and those can be translated and transferred into a bachelor's degree program. So we've got, as I mentioned, growth in industry certification. Pinellas County Schools has a goal of 50% of their, all of their students in career academies by 2015. Those are natural feeders into our associate and science degree workforce programs. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Krupp, for getting us set up for success workforce education. In a moment, you'll see the, the brainstorming software, and please begin identifying key questions and key observations related to workforce education. Identifying your top two. So may we pause for a moment and, and hear from each team your top two questions or observations? I'll come to Team One first, and who can speak on your behalf? Trustee Bella?
We had a pretty passionate discussion about while we do a better job than most of responding to what the employers are saying, we're still not there. And we're still hearing that companies are leaving the area because they can't find the talent that they need. And so we have to look at how we can do partnership, more partnerships, very similar to what we, I wasn't here, so I can't say we, but what y'all did with your nursing program and the success that was there because it worked. And if we can find other non-traditional, not the people that are on our advisory boards, not the people that we talk to all the time, but other industries that we're not talking to, and see how we can come up with that same success.
Very good. Thank you, Team One. And it was a passionate discussion, definitely. I can second that. Who can speak on your behalf? Team Two?
I got thrown in the bus on this one. Really, we had kind of two, two, I'll call them oversimplified things, but one is just what is, what is our success rates within our, with our job placement? That's something that we would like to see more of a focus. We would like to take the lead in, in job placement and making sure our students get, get jobs. And then, once they get jobs, listening to our employers and seeing what skills, maybe they have, these kids have the tech, or students have the technical skills, but they may not have the people skills. And the example I gave is that when I got into law school, there's a, there's a class you take of here's how you be a baby lawyer. And then, once you graduate and you pass the bar, there's another one that they say, okay, once again, here's how you be a baby lawyer. Here are the big words you use. Here's what you don't do. Here's how you dress. This is appropriate, this isn't. And while many of us in this room take it for granted that we should all know these things, a lot of these folks have never grown up in these worlds. And, and that's not a criticism, it's just, it's just another way of educating them and giving them the best opportunity to succeed.
Very good. All right, let's go on to top expectations, and while it's fresh, we'll have each team identify at least one key workforce education expectation. Ready? It's okay?
Okay, I've been elected here. All right, so top two, I'd say that most of our conversation stemmed around the identifying new partners in corporate, in the corporate, corporate world, modeling the nursing program, as we mentioned earlier, following up with them and using that model to identify new And then also integrating soft skill training into the, all programs and ensuring that they're job-ready, they know how to communicate, problem-solve, think critically.
Thank you, Team One. Team Two, who can speak regarding your top two expectations?
I think probably the same thing, maybe said in a different way, is, is how do we transition these students out of the programs that they're in and into the workplace or on to their next educational step? How do we provide the right stuff, whether it be the soft skill training, kind of the how-you-behave type stuff, or how do you get the job-type stuff? How do, how do, how do you kind of get them out of the academic side and into the real world better?
Okay, and, and as we've completed round three, looking at these top expectations, two key words jump right out, partnerships and transition. It's been identified that the nursing program is a model or exemplar that can be used not only for its own success, but the success in partnerships. And then looking for new partnerships with corporations, also an emphasis on transition into next educational steps or into job placement. And in the earlier discussion, we heard a couple of things that suggest alignment being very important, alignment to such things as professional certifications and, and where they are evolving, and alignment with the needs of, of employers.
Great. So we are right on track, right on schedule, and thank you for your guidance in terms of our strategic direction. And we will invite you now to head back to the Tropics Lab, where we will set up organizational health issues. We'll hear some presentations and then come back to the Forest Lab after that. We'll meet you in the Tropics Lab. And we will now focus on organizational health topics. The first topic is developmental education. And I'd like to invite, invite Dr. Jimmy Chang to please set the stage for developmental education. Just the facts. Dr. Chang.
Two-minute drill, huh? Okay. As we previously discussed, dev ed reform has caused us to divide our students into two groups, the traditional placement students and the flexible placement students. The flexible placement students are folks who graduated from a Florida public high school in 2007 or later, or if they served and are currently serving in, at the active military forces. And every flexible placement student for the spring semester are required to see an advisor. And currently, as you can tell, we have 547 students enrolled for spring, and you see the enrollments there. Now, what you have in front of you is during the advising process for the flexible placement students, when they see an advisor, as part of the discussion as it relates to the recommendations for developmental education and college credit coursework, they are handed some reading, writing passages and math questions to give them an idea as to the kind of skills that are required to take Composition One and intermediate algebra. And after all the information has been presented to them, the students make their decisions as to which path they would like to go on. And as you can tell from these pie charts here, 309 of those 547 were recommended for developmental math. And as you can see there, 46% chose to enroll in developmental math courses, while 54% chose to enroll in college-level math. Now, 159 students were recommended for developmental writing, and you can tell 32% chose to enroll in developmental writing, and 68% chose to enroll in Composition One. And last but not least, you have a comparable number of folks who are recommended for developmental reading. And as you see here, 22%, that's 37 students, chose to enroll in developmental reading, and 78% chose to enroll in Composition One. So what's true among all three disciplines is that a majority of the flexible placement students are choosing to enroll into college credit coursework as opposed to developmental education. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Chang. At this point, we'll, we'll invite Mike Bennett to come up and share about financial aid, just the facts.
Good morning, everyone. Andrew, this isn't working. It's not. It's not moving. Point it for me. Financial Assistance Services has over 42,300 financial aid applicants, and we have 25,000 students receive financial aid here at the college totaling $160 million. That's 56% of enrolled students receive financial aid, and $1.2 million of that is awarded in scholarships by the foundation. We send out lots of communication, do lots of outreach, and that's all done by 53 staff who are simply awesome. We have, in this country, $1 trillion in student loan debt. And what makes that a problem is the number of students who go into loan default. And right now, what the government does to take a look at that is they'll take a given year, and then they'll see with that cohort of students, how many students go into default in the next three years. And the national cohort default rate right now is 14.7%, which represents 600,000 students who are in loan default. At SPC, our cohort default rate right now is 20.8%. That's the ninth-highest rate and the fourth-highest in the number of defaults among Florida's 28 community colleges. Currently, we also have 4,460 students who are delinquent and repaying their student loans. And you can see, if you look at these three charts, we have the total dollars going up over the last four years, which is right now $102 million. We have the number of applicants taking out loans going up, and we have our cohort default rate at 20.8%. And our students right now are averaging, our lower division are averaging $7,841 per year, taking out loans. Upper division, $9,442. And keep in mind, students that are living home with their parents can borrow up to $27,500. Students who are older and on their own can borrow up to $57,500. And here's the problem, right now, the current regulations say that if your institutional default rate goes over 30% for three consecutive years or more, or more than 40% in one year, you can lose your eligibility for Title IV aid for three consecutive years. So that, what that would mean is, we would lose $53 million in Pell Grants and $99 million in student loans. We've, we've done some different things. I formed a Tampa Bay Student Loan Consortium of 17 schools, so we're looking at best practices and sharing ideas. We're in the process of hiring 15 student peer advisors program, and we're also doing more communication to our students in various delinquency statuss, considering some more mandatory activities for out-risk students like financial literacy and in-person counseling. And lastly, we're considering various options such as performance-based outsourcing and other high-impact models. But we need to do something. We see financial literacy and default prevention as becoming part of the college experience. It's simply the right thing to do and something we need to do, per the information that I presented today. That's the facts.
Thank you, Michael. We'd now like to invite Professor Robertson and Dr. Campbell to help us understand a little bit more about faculty evaluations.
Good morning. I'm Professor Heather Robertson. I teach political science at the Tarpon Campus primarily, but I'm also FGO Chair and FGO Executive Board Member for Tarpon Campus. Our faculty evaluation process here at SPC, we've been doing a wonderful job for years and years and years, but we had to kind of update and do a little bit of a refresh with the State Board Rule 6A that came about this past year. Basically, what the State Board Six, State Board Rule 6A does is try to standardize faculty evaluation criteria and standards across the state among state colleges. It also increases the term for continuing contract from three years to five years. So in preparation of those changes, the board will be receiving a revised DOT rule reflecting just mainly the year change. Hopefully, we'll bring that before the board in February of 2014. One of the things that we found out in our collaborative process was that we essentially are doing a lot of things right here at the college with our faculty evaluations. And one of the things that we wanted to continue was doing annual evaluations. That actually exceeds the State Board Rule 6A. The other thing that we did was to kind of update our criteria to include our current measurements and reflective of our enhanced data collection activity, so that basically we can keep refining how well we're doing in the classroom with our students.
I'm Martha Campbell, Dean of Communications, and I want to emphasize what a great committee this was in terms of a model of shared governance. The deans came together with the faculty, working together to try to address some of the needs. And one of the things that we decided is that there are digital portfolios that are available, software, that's available to help collect, help faculty members collect artifacts from their various experiences during the year that they can present to the dean, who is the direct supervisor of the full-time faculty, in order to be able to have a shared type of experience reviewing the information in the portfolio. We're very excited about that. We know that we will need to bring, bring a proposal to the budget hearings. I guess it will be in February again this year, that will try to address the purchasing of the software and the training that will be necessary for both the deans and the faculty. We have a pilot group that will be taking, working on the digital portfolio process. It's a, a small group in the spring of 2014 to see how that moves forward. And we will also be working on some updated criteria for evaluation as, beginning as early as the 2015 evaluations. The other thing that I really want to emphasize is that we believe that all the updates that we have made promote our central value of student success. And that includes making sure that we have an ongoing assessment of our evaluation processes and our evaluation tools, and that this assessment involve all of the stakeholders, the deans, as well as the faculty, in terms of making sure that we look at the types of criteria that will promote student success.
All right. So three Just-the-Fact presentations on organizational health. If you look at your team assignment for round one, organizational health, these are laser activities because we're looking at three topics, five minutes each, and we're going to invite you to go back to the Forest Lab, Teams One and Two. Find your new team assignment, and you'll see all three topics, financial aid, faculty evaluations, and developmental education. We will meet you in the Forest Lab. Who can speak on your behalf? Team One?
One of the things that we need to do is to continue to track how well our students who are doing, who are taking our recommendations and not taking our recommendations as they move into their coursework. The other thing we talked about is the fact that the encouragement of general, general education faculty to give some sort of a reading assessment over the textbook during the first week of the class, so that students will at least have a, have a preview of the textbook and the reading level of the textbook, because it's in the area of reading where students have been least likely to follow our recommendations.
Thank you, Team One. Team Two?
Ditto. We're going to go with ditto. But, but then, what they said. But what we also would like to see is that maybe our February meeting or our March meeting, we'd actually like to see the statistics of the, the kids that ignored us, and we'd actually like to see who withdrew and who, how many pings or dings or whatever we're calling it, but actually see the numbers of, of our success rate or our not-so-success rate.
Okay, well, on the topic of developmental education, these expectations come down to two metrics, one of which may support the other. So tracking how well students are actually taking the advice, taking the recommendations, and then another metric, what percentage of students who ignored the advice are making good progress? And if that number is very low, it maybe adds some credibility to the, the advice and recommendations being given.
Excellent. Thank you. On to financial aid. So please progress to financial aid. Top questions, observations, expectations? All right. I think in the interest of time, we'll, we'll pause. I can ask Team One if you will share your number one?
We had a number of number ones, and I think the, 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 the big thing for us is, and I think the big thing for us is, for us, really two things, is understanding more about why our default rate is as high as it is. And then also this idea is, should we be in the business of collecting? I mean, that's really not, in our mind, really not what we do. There's people who get up every day and do this and do this well, and maybe, maybe they should be the ones who do this and try to recover these funds or as much as they can. You know, talking to Doug, there's some of this that is already outsourced, Pell and maybe some of the federal stuff is taken care of. But on all that other stuff, which is probably a greater majority of it, we probably need to look at outsourcing that.
All right. Thank you, Team one. Team two, can you please share? Ditto. Okay.
We agreed on the outsourcing, obviously. But the only thing that we thought was important was coming up with a plan to focus on, that percentage, obviously, is what's hanging over our head. And so one of the things that, not that we would ever manipulate numbers because that would be bad, but if we were going to manipulate numbers, we would find out what the criteria is for those, and then we would focus our plan of attack for whoever we hire. And we would say, please focus on this. And we would, that's part of what we would hold them accountable for. And if they can't do it, and if they can't reduce our percentage, then we go on to the next guy. Ditto, though.
Okay, so a lot of ditto, a lot of ditto in this discussion of financial aid. And hearing both teams discuss almost the same direction at the same time kind of boils down to one of those classic strategy questions, what business are we in? And hearing some discussion about outsourcing or delegating something that is not part of our core competency, collecting money. And then something that also appears in the list here was a focus on something that is in our core competency, education. There was an item here about infusing financial literacy in the college experience. And while that didn't make the top expectations, it is part of the list.
Very good. Onto the final bucket, which is faculty evaluations. We'll have about five minutes to discuss. Reports, yes? Team one? Did you come up with one expectation for faculty evaluations?
We talked about a lot of stuff in this short period of time. The very first thing out of the gate was that the digital portfolio was a, kind of an industry standard for many other businesses, and that it's useful to archive the data, to look at trends, track goals, and to facilitate growth planning. And then to sort of build on that thought, we also added that the consistency of the tool to capture the information across the faculty, no matter what they teach, no matter what the modality, so that we can manage performance and look at trends in a consistent manner with a consistent tool would be helpful. Also, too, we had a little discussion about not just talking once a year. We were very happy that we reaffirmed our practice of annual evaluations, but that staying in touch throughout the year, maybe updating the portfolio as faculty have events and as deans assign, you know, certain activities throughout the year, was very meaningful, because it shouldn't just be a one-time thing. It should be consistent.
Thank you, Team one. Team two?
We also, we talked about the consistency of the evaluations through departments and faculty evaluations. And the major discussion happened around the fact that, for example, Dr. Fine, Captain Fine, you can be a doctor today. Captain Fine talked about, talked about any evaluation process in his own organization. If you're teaching AP, you're judged on how many people pass and get credit for AP. If you're an instructor that's not consistently passing, students that are not consistently passing, then you're no longer that, you're that kind of instructor now. Can we do that within the college community? I'm not sure. But, for example, as a board member, we don't know what evaluation means. We need to talk about what the evaluation is, what's the metrics that are associated with it, you know, success rates. And then be able also to provide counseling and other resources to those instructors who need help. But also, we need to be able to look at it and say, are we meeting the goal? And if it's not consistent across departments, we don't know whether we're meeting the goal or not.
Okay, well, on the subject of faculty evaluations, if we look at all six of these observations, expectations, questions, consistency and balance really, really jumps out. So there's the aspect of the hard numbers. There's the aspect of the qualitative side. And then the digital portfolio, which, to borrow a term from the field of medicine, would be evidence-based evaluation. All of that coming together. And then one other observation of this list of six, five of these questions and items appear to be about how we do faculty evaluations. And one of them is, what do we do about it? The question number five.
Great. Thanks, Milo. So our work has culminated into the final round. And at this point, we are going to invite our Board of Trustee members to come to this team area, huddle together, where you will talk informally about the organizational issues as well as.
As the board is making decisions during the year, you can see the impact of what you're working on. Jamelle, go ahead and give us a heads up here.
So this is just the model we're working on that you'd be able to use in future board meetings. It's got, where you could adjust the enrollment percentages for lower or associate degrees, upper division for baccalaureate. Tuition's the same thing at the dollar level. There's also other fees that we could look at, distance learning fee and the access fee. And then to the right is state funding percentages. And then down below, what it does is it calculates, based on any of those changes, the increase or decrease and overall what revenue impact that would be for us. Yes, it is.
So somebody put in a 1% enrollment at both lower and upper division. And the impact was $641,000. So leave that up there and raise tuition. Are those percentages or dollars there? Dollars. So put a dollar in for each of those, okay? Oh, you want to do percentage or dollars? Dollars. And you see that it pumped up what the impact would be in those sorts of things. And then state lottery, Governor Scott loves us. Let's give ourselves 3%, okay? And you just see what happens. But as we work through the year and you're, and we're working on, how are we going to finance things? If we want to talk about what happens if we do this, we can get an impact of how much money does it produce? And does that meet the needs for funding the priorities and the other side? We will develop an expenditure side of the house the same way. What happens with fixed costs that we can't avoid? What happens with discernible, how managing the schedule, those kinds of things. But I want you to be aware that we intend to work with you in the next couple of months, in line with the dialogue we just had a couple of minutes ago. Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you, we'll just keep working that. Behind the scenes, we can tweak it as people need. So that would be, Jamelle and Doug have done a really good job. And then this morning, I gave the final topic. First of all, let me, you can't leave without me saying thanks for what you've done. Helping us maintain a focus to execute the things that are fundamental to our mission in these very, very uncertain times is really, really valuable. I hope that you feel good about your contribution today, but it was very, very useful for all of us. There are three areas where I have a growing concern that the external environment is moving faster than the internal environment. And we will need to do things to change the pace of our own ability to respond and control. Those three areas are the online education. I don't think it's a big secret that that marketplace is the Wild West right now. I mean, everybody is offering that. Students have lots of choices. How do you know? Where do you do? How do you market it? How do you, how do you serve it? How do you do anything else? That one needs to be a strategic part of what we do. 30% of the credit hours are there. It looks like the area of high prospect for additional growth. We have to manage the credit. It needs to be in a little different organizational space for it to grow unfettered, okay? The second is the workforce development. We're proud of what we're doing. It's not enough. It has to move faster than it has. I tried to provide a little cover in this memo that our deans are doing great work. Their plate is so full that it's really hard to just keep loading stuff on their plate and hoping that it will take place in new areas of workforce. I think the organization needs to give this a little higher priority and structure. If I knew what I was talking about, I'd tell you that, too. I don't have that in my mind yet. And the third, then, is the student recruitment piece. As we have rolled up our sleeves with the change in our marketing and the approaches that we're taking, the merger of student recruitment and marketing, they're working together very well. I think there's a discussion going forward as to, is that, do we have the right organizational configuration to make that as optimum as it can be? So those three areas are where I'll be doing some work. We'll, I intend to take a careful but disciplined approach. Let me finish by saying, of all the things, not rearranging the deck chairs in the first three years has provided us a great deal of benefit. We have spent all of our time working on the things that are fundamental to the mission. Some things need attention organizationally now. So we'll be bringing those back in the next 90 to 120 days. Happy to have your inside comments, questions on that. But be ready for recommendations in one or more of these areas as we go forward. Mr. Chairman, that's the day, if everybody's, I'm happy to take some input, yeah?
Good morning. Appreciate it. I think it was very productive. Wish we had more time for some of the topics, but as a board, maybe we can move that to some of our meetings.
Yeah, I think just like Mr. Fine said, I think this morning was tremendously valuable for me. I think the, you know, over the last few hours trying to, you know, being able to kind of delve into all of those areas has been very beneficial. And I think as we've talked, something that we probably want to continue throughout the year to have these kind of pointed discussions.
Ditto. I just wanted to say it. No, I think the interaction with the faculty has been wonderful, getting to know a little bit more about each of them in addition to all the stuff that we've been able to accomplish. So, thank you.
Dr. Law, great morning. I will tell you, we should probably designate maybe January and June as our meetings to kind of do this. But in June, we can delve in a little more as long as we, you get the dates of everybody so that we can spend more time. Maybe that's an afternoon after a board meeting or something. I'm not sure. But also designate some time during our board meeting, as we discussed earlier, and you've heard from some of the board members that. And you come up with the plan and strategy, and we will, we will try to tweak it or accept it as best as we can. Don't want to prolong the time of the meetings. I don't want to go till 1:00. But I want to make sure that we at least have the opportunity to have a discussion about some of those critical areas like recruitment and retention and other things. I think it allows, just what Ms. Bello talked about, for us to interact with faculty and staff and other folks that are out on the front line doing this every day. We get great reports from you, but sometimes there's a little bit different perspective from them that they're dealing with that issue on a daily basis. And it helps you and us. So I think this was a great morning. You talked about your three critical areas, online education. You know, we talked about that. I think you will probably come back with a great plan for us to be able to increase and also have, not just increase the programming, but have a quality programming going forward as well. I think that's something that St. Pete College has prided itself on, is having a quality education. And I think that's what most people would say. On the workforce development front, wholeheartedly, I think everybody up here agrees with you. We want to know how we can re-engineer what we did with regard to the nursing program. That has been a huge success. I mean, you and I talk about that all the time. Where, you can go into any hospital, any nursing home, any facility that's healthcare-related, and just about every person that you, every nurse that you ask where they went to college or where they got their nursing, we did their nursing program, they're going to say St. Petersburg College. I think I run into one or two that have not, and they're usually not from this area. The other thing is, you know, the Pell program. We talked about it down at Eckerd College. We need to compete with all these folks that are in our space. This is our space. And we like to own our space and do it better than everybody else. Just because they started doesn't mean they could provide a better quality. I think that we could see a lot more folks shift to St. Petersburg College because of cost and other things coming to us, and we can provide a better, a better employee to the workforce. Ms. Bello talked about all the time in her discussions with other workforce committees and other committees that we hear that corporations leave the area because they, or they don't come to the area because they can't find a quality employee. We're the provider of that. I know Ed Peachy is doing that job, but we are the folks that can provide the quality person for that workforce. So I know you'll work on that as well. And then recruitment and retention. It's been said by Ms. Hogans and you and so many others, we're working on that. We're going to be the best at that. We're going to be able to engineer a model that other people are going to look to, I think, long-term on the recruitment, because we've changed our focus and make it, we've made it student-centered. And I think once it catches hold, students are going to want to come here because they know they will have the support. Clayton Wilcox, who used to be superintendent, I tell Dr. Gordon this all the time. He always used to say to me, "Devron, I want kids running into school as fast as they run out." I want folks running into St. Petersburg College as fast as they want to get out. And they can create their own model to get in and get out. And I think that's what we're creating right now. We're doing that. And so I want to commend everybody here, everybody that was involved in this, your staff and other folks, because just because they're not here doesn't mean they didn't have any input in this. We're a family, and we're a team. And the teams work together. You know, I hate to use the old spur here. He used to say, "If the left tackle don't block, you know, quarterback ain't going to get the ball off." And that's very, that's very, very true. And so whatever position you play, we're playing it at a high level, and we're doing it very well as an organization. And we're going to step up our game, and we're going to do the rest of this stuff at a higher level and better than everybody else. So thank all of you, and thank the leadership, Dr. Law, your leadership team and other folks as well. But right down to the person that is closing up this place at night, our Collaborative Labs for being able to have this kind of setting to be able to do this. I mean, these are the kind of folks, we have world-class folks in this organization. And we need to continue to push and push and push the envelope until we're the best at everything. Now, I don't know how we're going to do that. Some people are going to have to stay up late, including myself. But thank you all for what you do on a daily basis, and thank you all for the services that we provide to our community. So thank you all. You did a good job. You should give yourself a round of applause.